All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education to order December 17, 2012. Thank you all for coming. Before we start, I'd ask us all to stand and have a few moments of silence in recognition and in memory of the 21st graders ages six and seven and the six staff members horribly killed on Friday at the Sandy Hook Elementary School. Marty, would you take attendance, please?
Yes, if I could. Here we are. All right. Valerie, are you here?
No, she's not here. She will not be here.
She will not be here? Tony?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Freddie?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Emily?
Yep.
June?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Mike?
Here.
Okay, just Valerie missing.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Is there anyone who wants to remove any item from the consent agenda? Approval of our broad minutes, maternity leave for Kate McClark, field trips to UConn, and the Metropolitan Museum of Art. All right, they're not hearing anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda. It is approved by acclamation. Thank you. Item three, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to address this? No. Item four, report of the chair. I want to commend Dr. Costantino and the staff with regard to the, again, horrible events which happened at the Sandy Hook Elementary School on Friday. We got an email from Dr. Costantino early Friday, reasonably early Friday morning, not only to us but to the school community. And I know this has to be terribly trying time for the staff. I know that some of the staff knew, some of the teachers there, the principal, Ms. Hochsprung, I hope I pronounced her name right, was a local lady. And I know that some of our staff have worked with her previously, so it's a terrible time. And Dr. Costantino, I believe, had meetings and maybe should discuss this with her in her report on Friday afternoon with the staff. So it's a sobering event for all of us. And I just wanted to thank our staff and Dr. Costantino for the professional way it was used. I have nothing else at this time. Item five, virtual high school presentation by Mr. Ray Turek.
Yes. Ray Turek is the department chair of science at Bethel High School. He's also the virtual high school coordinator. I believe he's been teaching it now, is it two years?
Virtual High School?
Yeah.
Six years.
Six years?
Six years.
Oh, my gosh. I'm older than I thought. Okay, so anyway, he's going to, on the screen, give us a presentation. And this is an online instructional program. And Ray, you'll talk about it and the different aspects of it. We thank you for coming.
Okay, so when Dr. Costantino asked me to come on out, can't say no. She's been so helpful to me in my career, so thanks for having me. So she asked me to introduce Virtual High School to you. As I said, I've been doing this now for six years as the site coordinator for Bethel High School. They changed their name. At one time, it was just called Virtual High School. Now it's the Virtual High School Consortium Collaboration. And I'll get to why it's changed. So basically, what it is, is online classes that are available to high school students, and actually, middle school students as well. It's co-synchronous, synchronous, which means if you were to take a correspondence course 30 years ago, you might send a letter to a professor, here's my work, and then they'd send back, read this. It's not like that. This is, it's also not like a lot of other online courses that are offered through different companies. It's co because they work with you. So there's a lot of support that's in place. You can't just work at your own pace. You have to work at the pace of a class, just like you would a traditional classroom. So you have a given time period in which you have to complete assignments with your class, and you do work with, which is where that co comes in as well. You'll work with teachers, you'll work with your classmates. And in the end, after 15 weeks, you know, you've gone through your class. As I say here, it's available to high school students across the country, and actually, it's global now. I've talked to a lot of my students that deal with students in Israel, Sudan, you name it. They're starting to reach those markets as well, particularly with English-speaking schools in those countries. So how does it work? The teacher, specially trained in online education, posts lessons, guides discussions, provides feedback, aids understanding, asks and answers questions, and assesses student work. So if you were to compare that to a traditional classroom, you know, that's what you would see. So really, what it does is it takes a traditional classroom and it brings it on an online forum. Students learn when and where it works best for them.
Is that feedback real time, instantaneous?
No, it's not. No. Within 24 hours is the virtual high school policy. So generally speaking, most will have some feedback before that. I will say, as far as feedback goes with grading, I wish a lot of teachers graded as quickly as the teachers that you see here.
No, I'm just trying to get an understanding of it. When they're having that, when they're dealing with this or having this interface with this teacher, this highly, specially trained teacher?
Right.
Is that, is that a teacher that is doing this at the same time they're observing it?
No.
Or is it a canned lesson, basically?
No.
Is it recorded?
No, it's not recorded, generally speaking, although that component of screencasting is starting to pop up in virtual high school, where a teacher will actually screencast, not unlike Khan Academy. So they'll be sent off to do lessons, you're going to read on this, and then where the interaction comes in is through class discussions. So a teacher will generally give a topic of conversation, so, you know, read this article or watch this video, and then posts your thoughts on it. It could be thoughts, it could be, you know, three things you learned. It depends on the course, it depends on the teacher. And then, over the course of a week, most of the discussions occur in a weekly period. Classmates will then respond, and they'll talk to each other. So at no point does anybody have to be on the computer at the same time. And then the teacher will monitor discussions over the course of the week, add feedback to those discussions. If there's specific questions that they have for the instructor, they can, there's two places they can ask. They can ask in general formats. If it's a question that other students might have as well, they can ask in a general format, ask the instructor. Or if it's something that is very specific to them, they could, you know, they can send a private thread to the teacher.
All right, but in essence, they're doing this by keying in back and forth, back and forth, as the interface is really keyed into a computer.
Yes, it is.
It's not, it's not watching someone who's in, who they're keying back and forth
Correct.
In combination with the real time.
Right, this is not, this is not real time. Yes.
Well, that was what I was going to explain. I think in the training thing we did last week, there was some confusion when it says discussion. People sort of visualize it, maybe like a Skype situation, but it's more of like a blog or a Wiki page, right?
Yeah, I think that's, that's more accurate.
So, so.
Correct. You know, and that's-
It makes it more flexible.
It's, it's very flexible.
Which is why you don't have to be there at the same time.
You know, and as that second bullet, students work when and where it works best for them. I have students that, you know, I wouldn't recommend it, they're up at 1:00 in the morning, and this is when they want to get their work done. Other students like to get up early and do it. And then there are other students that get the work done in school. And I can explain how that works also. So virtual high school, there's literally hundreds of courses that are available through VHS. I put a few of them here, and I, I put the link here as well, so we can, we can take a look, if you want to see how extensive. Literally, I started with the alphabet, and I featured some AP classes. There are a number of AP classes that Virtual High School offers. And you'll see AP art history, calculus, computer science, psychology, statistics. Typically, these are courses that most high schools can't offer, because they might only have two or three students interested. And that's one of the best parts about Virtual High School, is it really opens up courses to any student. You know, it would be nice as a school to offer all of these electives, it's just not financially feasible. So this is one way that, you know, you can get around that. There's a lot of great science classes that you can see, anatomy and physiology, animal behavior, bioethics, biotechnology. To actually teach a course in school on biotechnology would require a large investment. There's history courses, constitutional law, democracy, et cetera, et cetera. Essentially, you run the full gamut of types of classes. And if there was anything in particular you wanted to know about, by the way, you can see some foreign languages, Latin, Mandarin, Chinese, what high school has that? Not many. And all of these, by the way, are all NCAA accredited, if they're an NCAA requirement, meaning a core course. So they all are accredited through local jurisdictions. Go ahead.
I guess it's, I shouldn't guess anything. Is it possible, I should say, to have courses that require in their normal, real-world aspect, lab time, things like that?
Yeah.
I know that you couldn't do AP chemistry.
Oh, no, there are, there is AP chemistry. We have actually two students this year that are taking AP biology, and they were sent a kit, a very large box, about this big, and they independently work on those. And, you know, our teacher's very helpful in that. They'll do a lot more simulations. So any, any lab which the AP specifically requires, they'll either physically do it or do it through a simulation, because AP doesn't actually require that they go through it. It's required that the content is covered through simulation or experimentation. So, yeah. AP Chem, AP Bio, they're, they're there.
And I'll tell you how the course worked with that after.
Was there any courses you wanted to see? I, you know, I can, I can pull up hundreds.
Show us, show us something.
Sure.
That's why you're here.
Well, I mean, it's part of course lists. So, you know, here's, here's the actual website, VHS Collaborative. If you wanted to do, oh, I actually did a search here, 101 Ways to Write a Short Story.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, so if you clicked on it, you'd see the description. It'll give you a course description, and if you go on the catalog, you'll see all of these. And one thing about this course, it actually will tell you, this level is honors. It's available to eighth grade students if they're gifted and talented. So this is one thing, and a lot of school districts have gone away from gifted and talented programs. Some school districts are using Virtual High School to reach those, those students and have something to offer for those, those students. So 15 weeks, you know, media kit, that, that means something would get sent to the site coordinator. It'd be their job to distribute it. So that's, you know, that's, that's one. If you, you know, if you, you wanted to play around with this, you could see, I'll show you all the advanced placement courses that are offered. And statistically, students that take AP classes through Virtual High School do better than an average high school.
Do better than what?
I'm sorry?
Do better than what?
On, on the scores, on the AP tests. They score, they actually score higher than, than an average. So art history, biology is here. And that says pending reauthorization, because the AP Bio curriculum has been redone this year, and most AP Bio courses actually right now would say pending. Calculus AB, calculus BC, we actually have a student taking that this year. That's the calculus after the first one. AP computer science, economics, English literature, composition, environmental science, French. This is the, you know, the list goes on and on. AP physics C, that's also a very advanced, that's physics with calculus. I have a student taking that class this year. Psychology's been a very popular course at our school until we just recently added it in-house. So, you know, and I don't want to give you the impression that it's just, it's just for AP students. It's not. If you're interested in, I don't know, business, there's options for you. And I think one of the keys, you know, after, after going through this a few years, you know, one of the things that I found is students do well if they're really, truly interested in the content. If they're just taking a class, to take an online class, they generally don't do as well. So if somebody's truly interested in business, business and personal law, entrepreneurship, international business, we've had a couple of students that actually have, you know, career paths in mind when they take these, personal finance. So these classes are not as rigorous, and, you know, these are, these are standard-level classes. And, and, you know, the question of rigor always comes up, you know, how difficult are these? For the most part, I would say, for the most part, I'm generalizing, students that get A's in honors classes in school will get A's in the year, in year. Students get, that get Cs in regular classes tend to get Cs here. So there's a strong correlation between the two. So now you see what kind of classes. So some advantages, we already talked about some of them. You know, your students are able to take courses that could never be offered at one school. And that's why this, this collaboration comes in. It's really a collaboration amongst schools across the country. You can resolve scheduling conflicts, this happens a lot. Student really wants to take this course, it doesn't fit to the schedule, what's plan B? This could be plan B. It mimics independence required to succeed in college. When you go to college, here you go, here's the readings. A lot of times, you need, you know, you need to stay on top of things. Exposes students to using technology they'll need in college. The last statistic I saw was around 80% of all students as undergraduates will eventually take an online class. This is one, one leg up there we get. Can be used for middle school gifted and talented students, and it can actually be used for credit recovery. Typically, they're 15-week courses, starting in early September. They usually leaves, leaves the site coordinator with about a week to prepare the students to go through an orientation. And they end mid-December, so actually, Wednesday is the, the last day for this year. In some years, it's a little later, some years it's a little earlier. Typically, students are expected to come to class a minimum three times. And by I say come to class, means log on and participate. And a lot of students initially have the understanding, like, oh, I'll just get it all done on one day, and get it, that's not how it works. You're expected to collaborate with your classmates through this process, which is why you have a minimum of three times. And that, that is the minimum. Some teachers will ask that you log on, especially in the more advanced honors classes in AP, four or five times, which is what you would, you would see in a, in a normal face-to-face class. Every class has class discussions. The extent of reading videos and tutorials depends, you know, on the course. Some are very tutorial-oriented, some have a lot of videos that they want you to watch, and some have a lot of reading. You know, typically, your English classes, there's a lot of great English classes where, you know, they have very high rigor, where they, I get sent five books. Papers, presentations, wiki pages, so these are all things that students can be asked to do. Make a presentation with your classmates. And that's very unusual for online classes, where it's usually you and the teacher. In this case, you're expected to actually collaborate with your peers. And, and the collaboration with your peers is, is actually a great part of this class. Typically, I'd say probably half of the students were from the Northeast, the rest are spread out across the country, in some cases overseas. So they get to experience life outside of, you know, this area. You do have tests and quizzes, although they're not as frequent as, as typical face-to-face classes. So I figured I'd take you into an actual class here, so you can see what, what these look like, if you'd like. No, this is not where I wanted to take you, sorry. So this is, the, the main page is vhscollaborative.org. And it used to just be VHS, and like I said, they're really focusing on the collaboration aspect of it. A student typically would just go here and log in. So I brought a login of one of my students, so we can take a look at what she's been So she's taking modern Middle East. So, like I said, this is the last week. Typically, actually, every class looks like this. DTL is, is the interface which is used, desire to learn. A lot of colleges use this as well. I actually just recently finished my, my coursework, and I use the same format. Course home, you'll have weekly announcements from your teachers, week 13, week 12. So at the beginning of each week, the teacher will highlight a few really important things, and then here are your lessons. So if we just randomly pick, I don't know, week 11, Israel and the Arabs. This is, one of the best parts about this is, is if you're organized or not organized, this can help you in organization. I think all teachers could benefit from this. You always have an overview, and you always have a weekly checklist, basically, of things that need to get done. And it'll give you a breakdown. This is worth 10 points. This is worth 10 points, weekly vocabulary, documentary on, I don't even know what that says. Worth 25 points. Image analysis, 10 points. Discussion, 45 points. And it gives you the due dates for each of those. So students that really struggle with these classes, and I'm not going to tell you that there aren't, you know, students that do, one of the first things that I have them do is print this out, post it on your refrigerator. This is what you need to get done this week. Discussions, we're not actually really going to be able to look too much at the discussions. Most of the discussions get closed out. So if you were to go into a thread, here's a, your original post should answer the following question. List five current event articles you selected to report on and give at least one example of new information you learned from each. So if you click in here, you, you can actually see the post of this student, as well as, where are we? Oh, there we are. So you would call us a thread, is when you would make a, a post, and then some people would respond to you. You can see the number of threads that are, you know, and replies that each student has made. And this is really to take the place of interaction that would normally occur in a classroom. And as a teacher, you would ask your students to discuss. Here's, here's something we'd like to talk about, get together. In this case, it occurs, it occurs here. Dropbox, this is how they submit assignments, and you can see, like I said, if you're organized, this is a great way to see, all right, I have this, did I submit it? Yes, I did. One submission. Quizzes, class lists, grades. Every two weeks, the grades have to be updated, the teacher. And VHS is very strict, and they stay on top of their teachers to make sure that the grades are being updated every two weeks. Those grades will then get sent to the site coordinator, and we'll then update them. So the, the job of the site coordinator is to act as liaison between the parent, the parents and the teacher. So all grades would go to me, and then I post them on, we use Power Schools.
Sue.
Sue. Blogs and Wikis, this, you know, they might create a blog as a group, or a Wiki as a, as a, as a group. And then some resources. In this case, the resources would, would serve instead of a textbook. I never got a textbook for, for this student's course. So that's, that's what a typical class looks like. They all look basically the same. AP classes, instead of 15 weeks, are 33 weeks, so they don't get, they don't really get too much of a break in between. Tips for success, take courses you're really interested in. Stay organized, participate regularly, manage your time, and ask for help. And that's where the site coordinator really comes in. I had a video, if we have audio, did we have audio? So I had a video last year, and it's very honest. You'll see some pros and cons of students that have taken some classes. And like I said, you know, it's not for everybody. Some students really need to see that teacher in front of them, others, not necessarily. Maybe we won't watch it.
Is that a DVD?
Yeah.
Just play it through your DVD player. You have it open in file explorer. Do you have a media player after there somewhere?
Yeah, they actually put it in today.
It's on the bottom right. It's the last item on the list.
There it is. Oh, thanks.
Nothing gets by ground.
You can't, can you hear this or not?
No.
Can't hear us there?
No? Okay. We'll forget the video then. You can hear it? Okay, I'll, I'll play. We interviewed some students, so you can get their perspective on it.
...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
So you don't have to worry about getting one thing in one day. You just have to get everything in by the end of the week so you can plan it however you want to do it.
The AP classes are approved, AP syllabus is, so if a student was interested in getting college credit, they could take one of the AP classes.
Well, obviously AP English isn't an easy class. It's a very difficult class. Other people I've heard logged virtual high school because they were taking classes that they loved. And I did not like AP English that much because it was so much work and I was very stressed and everything. And with the additional stress of not being able to talk to my teacher face-to-face and having one due every Tuesday at midnight, made for very long days. Like I think I stayed up Sunday, Monday, Tuesday till midnight each day, each day. And my sleep schedule got all out of whack and my time management was insane. If I had changed my time management, then my experience with virtual high school would have been more positive.
Generally speaking, students that are motivated, disciplined and stay on top of their work have success in virtual high. So you got some student perspectives. You got some student perspectives. In one case, it, you know, it wasn't a great experience for her. She was actually thrown into the course because of scheduling conflict. So we put her in there temporarily for one semester until her schedule opened up and she had a lot going on. And, you know, self admittedly, she didn't really keep up and, you know, it gets, it can be demanding. You know, the eleventh, midnight at Tuesday night is considered the end of the week. They start on Wednesdays. So that deadline is, is, you know, it's, it's artificial in the sense that students really create it. The deadline is when they need to get it done. So I'll take questions if you have any interest in responding. Sure.
If a student has signed up for this and it's coordinated through the school, it said they had, they had to go at least three days a week. What do they, if they don't, in other words, what they're doing if they're not in this class, but they're keeping up with their work, they intend to do it in some other way or even if they do go the three days, what are they doing the other day or two that the class might be needing?
By visiting the class three times would mean just in the, in the online forum. So the way we have it set up is not, you know, a school can set up virtual high school in their schedule in many different ways. The way we set it up is we schedule it as the last two periods of the day for students. And when that time period comes along, if they're in good standing, meaning they have an eighty, they're free to sign out, go home. And if they want to do their work then, they can do their work then. If the grade drops below an eighty, they stay for those, for that, for that time period and they work on their, their course. So the, the logging on, it's literally logging on three times. It doesn't happen, have to happen within the confines of your, you know, your school. We have students that take it as an extra class beyond their normal schedule. So there's, there's nothing, you know, over the course of their day, they don't have any time allocated for virtual high school, but they want it on, they want the course, so they take it on their own free time. So, you know, we don't actually ever see them during the course of the day. If they have issues or needs, they would, they would come and see me after school.
Not that this would happen in our district, but I could see some critics of virtual high schools saying, could this be used to simply save money by a district to kind of say, okay, we're going to save money by getting all of our electives and telling our students now that you just go onto virtual high school? How would you reply to that?
It's, you know, it's not, the intention in, in virtual high school to tell you this is not to, it's, it's not for that. It's to supplement what you have. And that's why it's called a collaboration. It's, it's all these, these schools that can't offer these courses and they want to put their heads together and, and come up with a solution. I, I think, you know, they don't actually even offer, they wouldn't even let you as a, as a district, you know, give a student a diploma if that were to happen. So you can't actually get a diploma through this. You have to take your courses through and it's actually the, it would be your school district that offers the credit. So the credit actually comes from you. The, the teacher would assign the grade and then, you know, the credit comes from you. So I wouldn't think it was a good idea. Obviously, there's a lot you can learn from hands-on that you can't get, get from this. So this is really just meant to supplement what you have as opposed to replace. Go ahead.
So your job is a coordinator?
Right.
So what kind of things do you do? And can you also talk about the technology and have there ever been times where there were issues?
Yeah. The hardest part for me happens in April. As the site coordinator, it's my job to make sure these kids get into the classes. And some of these classes, you know, there's hundreds and hundreds of high schools that want their kids in these classes. And some of these classes are very demanding and difficult. So at eleven fifty-nine, I, I sit there and I have all my wish lists set up and for a day, I just go, go nuts and I try to enroll these, these students into the classes. And then, you know, you'll get changes along the way, you know, consistently from that point until the school year starts. So I set the schedule for them, put them in the class that they want to, to go into. And then from that point on, when we, when we meet at the beginning of the school year, I spend the first week explaining to them how to, well, first explain about Connecticut, how they're supposed to talk to people in an online community. And then how to upload, how to go through discussions. And then we check for software. So most of the courses have software checks built in, so you just run a check and if it's not there, you know, I don't know how locked in your, your district, we have a hard time changing things at, at, in our district as far as computers. So we can't exactly just add a program. Most, we haven't had, we haven't really had many issues. There's been a few along the way. And for the most part, it's only in one small component. Like right now, I have a girl that can't make recordings, audio recordings, but I can on my computer. So when she needs to do that, she comes to me and she spends, you know, she takes my computer for half an hour and, and makes the recordings at that time.
So she can't do that on her home computer?
She can't do it on the school computer and she can't do it on her home computer.
Okay.
But she can on mine, so.
Are you finding most students have what they, is required at home or does it?
Most do.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's very typical browser. The, the language courses were a problem four or five years ago. Most, most students didn't have a way to record audio. You know, when you're, you're taking Mandarin Chinese, you would need to, to go through an audio, you know, recording. And, you know, most, most computers nowadays do have recording devices built in. So that, that has been a lot easier of late. Beyond that, it's, it's very rare.
I'm curious, are we considering this kind of thing here in Region 12?
Yes, we are.
We are?
We are. We also tomorrow, not tomorrow, Wednesday, we're also meeting with Apex, which we met at the convention just to hear their take. But, you know, I, I apparently I've used virtual high school for six years and it really has grown, right? I mean, when we first started, it was maybe-
We first started, we started initially just as a buy seat member, meaning we bought seats as we needed them. And we did it through the regional-
Krec.
Correct. We did it through them at a discounted rate. So Krec, you would, I'm sure you, you're in that region here too. You would get it, you, there'd be a consortium bid with Krec that would reduce the prices and you could buy as many seats as you needed. So if you started off and only had six students that were interested, you'd pay for those six seats. And then we grew. It was the third year. The first year, we started very small. And then the second year, it, it jumped up substantially. So that's when we decided to put a teacher in. And Mr. Trinkline, who you saw, who teaches astronomy, by teaching that one course, we're allotted twenty seats per semester, so forty seats over the course of the year at no additional cost. So it's the school's responsibility to pay for his training, which they did. And, you know, this, however the district decides to pay him, whether it would be part of his regular teaching load or an extra course, that would be something the school would decide. But with that, you get the forty seats. Sure.
Did you find that students who came at a designated time to log in, whether it's a computer lab or whatever, they're five days a week, were they for the most part successful and able to stay on top? I mean, did you see a difference between students who were kind of working on their own-
Well, the students that are working on their own, you don't have the leverage on them. If it's scheduled into their block and they're not doing well, they can't leave. So that's incentive for them to get their grade up because they want to sign out, they want to have their free time, they want to be able to do this when they want to do it. And that, you know, so to, to, to be confined to a computer lab saying, you know what, you need, you need to get back on track, that gives them incentive to get out. But with that said, usually the students that want to take it as the extra class, those are the really motivated students. When, rarely, when you do have a student who's doing it on their own and they're not doing well, like I said, the incentive is, it's, it's harder to get them caught back up. Because you can't say, alright, you know what, today you're here for two hours and we're going to get you caught up with this week. So ideally, I, I think it works best if that time period is set in, in the day. But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't always work out that way.
You said, I guess you, in your role as coordinator, would have these sessions at the beginning of their semester, you'd start it at eleven fifty-nine and you'd have your wish lists. Those were the students' wish lists as far as prioritized lists of which classes they wanted to take.
Right.
And the limiting factor on that was their scheduling or the fact that each course only had a certain number of seats available?
Right. That's it. The courses have a maximum of twenty-five students per course. And some of these courses are, are very unusual to try to find, I mean, there's only, there's only one Mandarin teacher. And I think right now, there's three sections of it. So you're looking at, out of the hundreds and hundreds of students and across the country, you're looking at seventy-five spots for that, for that course. So as a site coordinator, you kind of figure out which courses are the ones that fill up fast and those are the ones you try to register.
Now, is, is the program expanding both in terms of-
It is, yeah.
-its reach and also in terms of its, its capability to handle more and more as it expands?
Yes, yes.
I'm just wondering if, is there, you know, is, are there growing pains that were about to hit now that you're aware of?
No, I think there were some growing pains a few years ago. They had some, you know, they had a couple issues. Nothing, you know, that, you know, they were resolved within a day or two, you know. Their server crashed because they had so much traffic. I think for the most part, they're past that.
Because I'd imagine one, one of the constraints too is obviously the number of seats that a teacher can handle as far as the collaboration and the grading of papers and things like that.
Right, right.
So, but in the rollout nationally, that's being handled to, at least to your liking? So that, you know, if, if four hundred more schools join in the next several years, they're going to have teachers that they are recruiting and enrolling?
Right. And, and, you know, their goal is, so if they're, you know, if you, you were to sign up here, you know, their goal is eventually to get you as a full-time member, meaning have a, have a teacher.
Right. But what I'm saying is that so that there won't be too much of a, of a, there won't be complications in terms of the kids not getting in because there's no seat for them. There will hopefully eventually be the point where, you know, obviously it's not going to be infinite, but there's going to be less restrictions in terms of that and more perhaps restrictions in terms of their own schedules or their own abilities or things like that.
Right. Right now, we have two teachers at this point teaching. So we have forty seats per semester this one. I have thirty, thirty-six students right now. Every single one of them, except for one, got their first choice.
Okay, okay, that's kind of what I-
If you have teachers teaching, you get to register two weeks before the general public. And if you have teachers teaching some of the areas of need, you get a, like a nice little bonus.
World languages, let's get in there.
Right. Well, we have a world language teacher that we're hoping is going to teach German. I have to take her out to lunch, I think.
I'm just wondering if the teacher that actually, the two teachers that you have right now that are teaching courses through VHS, are, is that in addition to their normal load, their teaching load?
One of them.
Or is that part of their teaching?
One of them, it's part of her teaching load. I can't say for sure. It's really not, that's not my side of that. I'm fairly certain that one of them, it's part of her teaching load and the other one, it's extra.
Gets an extra.
Right, because he-
It's like a one point two or whatever.
Right. In, in the, in his district, in the teacher's contract, if you teach an extra class, you get six percent of your salary.
Okay.
So if you teach a year, you get twelve percent of your salary extra.
As far as the teachers that are offering those courses, is it like a traditional class for them in the sense that they would have carved out of their day time for that, for that class?
Yeah, they, if, yeah, they wouldn't have a, a class that, that would show up in their schedule. That's their class, so.
Okay. They're just that there would, there wouldn't be any students literally there.
Right.
Exactly.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it really. Thank you very much.
If you have any questions, you can send an email.
Okay, absolutely. I will send your email to everyone. Thanks a lot.
Alright, thanks.
Say hi to everyone for me and Karen.
Alright, thank you for that.
Okay. I just, just to add to that, as I said, we are, a group of us meeting with Apex on Wednesday, which is another online program, just to kind of hear what they have to say. But bottom line is in this year's budget presentation from me, there will definitely be an online component that I will be asking you to consider. And so you know, as far as the costs go, they've changed, you know when we get free seats, they, that what they do is they lower the price. So right now, just so you have an idea, it's a cost about, if you are a teaching member school and you have ten students, it's two hundred and fifty-six dollars a student. If you're not a, a teaching member school and it would be four hundred and fifty dollars a student, so it's almost two hundred dollars more per student.
Is that a semester or a year?
That's per course. So it's a semester.
Semester course.
Semester course.
Even if it's a course that's a thirty, one of those courses is longer than-
AP was thirty-three, they left count at two.
AP, maybe two courses probably.
You probably have to pay for two.
Well, I would think so, yeah. But the other piece is that what we do in the former district is we charge the parents and the student if they failed the course, that they had to pay for the fee. And as far as the supplies go, just so you know, if you are teaching the course, you, your school is responsible for paying for what they call, I forget what they call it, but basically the kits or the supplies or the books. But if you are taking the course, you get that all free. That's how they kind of like balance it out. So for example, if I'm taking AP Lit and I need those five books, the teacher of that school pays for all those books and sends them out to the kids and the kids don't pay, we don't pay. But if our teacher was teaching AP Lit, we would pay for those books and-
That seems backwards there.
Yeah.
Well, you know what it is? It's their way of kind of like, it balances out as opposed to having to then charge people for books and stuff. It was never really an issue where I was from, but that's how they do it, just so you know.
Pat?
Yes.
Do they teach this during the school day? Do kids have to be in the school to do it or?
They, they, they can, they don't have to be.
They could be at home.
They could be at home. So, yeah.
Pat, I probably should have asked him, but courses that are traditionally full-year classes like AP Lit.
Yes.
How, because they're only running September to December, how do they handle that?
Well, that would be thirty-three weeks.
Okay.
That's thirty-three weeks. So that-
So that goes beyond?
That goes, yeah, that goes double the time. So I would assume they take off probably this holiday week right now.
Okay.
Because they say they end Wednesday and then they probably start right again at the beginning of January.
And how many approximately do a full year? Because it sounded like most of them are semesterized.
It depends, you know? There's a lot of kids taking it now.
Right.
So it just depends on the course. You know, you get, you know, you have, it's not just for kids the brightest and the, you know, want every AP course. There are a lot of kids who take different courses based on interests. But some of them are, you know, year-long courses.
Okay.
So you have to see the interest.
Right.
But it's really important to get somebody to teach in the program. So that's what we're working on.
I think in terms of cost, seeing an onsite teacher is worthwhile financially, you need to look at the salary of the teacher, what it costs to have them teach a course and then decide what it would cost to have X number of seats in the online school and whatever price. And then you decide whether the teacher is better used in onsite art class or whether it's better to just pay the driver.
Yeah, but I, I think also a lot of times, and this is what's so great about us having everyone on the same schedule, we'll now be able to see if, you know, those people who don't have those full schedules and who are working part-time maybe could then, you know, become part-time by teaching a course. So that's a possibility too. But I absolutely hear you. But the thing that I like about teaching the course is that then you get to register two weeks before. And for those of you who used to register in college when I did and you had to wait online and, and you got up there and everything was closed, you have to get back online and punch the holes, that's kind of what it is. You know, those schools are going to get the best classes. So we'll see what happens. I will definitely bring you all the information.
Pat, are you thinking of at some point, maybe not initially, but are you thinking at some point of expanding this to some students at the middle school?
I, I think it would be fabulous.
Will you do that, is that going to be a hard rollout? Would that happen right away?
No, that could happen right away, absolutely. I think, you know, one of the things for Connecticut, if you know it or not, is Connecticut law states that you have to identify talented and gifted students, but you do not have to serve them, which is interesting law. But this, yeah, but this allows students to be able to do that. And do it in the summer and do it, you know, different times. So it definitely is an appealing piece as we get out there to start to sell ourselves to other places. So with that said, just a couple of things on my list. We had a meeting this week and we, last week I think it started, and we are doing a full court press to get our Sherman kids to come to Chapag. We're having raffles, we're having, we're inviting them to, we're giving them free passes to sporting events and, and things that are going on at Chapag and- to sporting events and, and things that are going on at Chapag and we're giving them, anybody who comes for shadow, we're giving them a T-shirt. So we're really trying to, you know, talk it up and let them see how wonderful our school is. Starting at Sherman, then we'll work our way to other schools.
Have, have we done something, I mean, I don't know, have we done something to improve the shadowing process? Because one of the things I noted the last time I had, I had, one of my, my younger daughter, she was the contact for a Sherman student to shadow, and one thing she told me was is that we had a situation where we had students that weren't paired correctly with the courses they were shadowing. If a student is not a French speaker, pairing them with someone who takes them to their French class is probably not going to be that meaningful. There were things like that and I think that there was some effort to try to improve that and I wonder if we've.
Well, we're definitely working on, and I know Kim and Todd and Sam are working on the shadow. We have different people working on different aspects, so I'll make sure that committee knows about that.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. So that's one thing we're doing. Let me just tell you, as a continuation of Friday's tragedy, we really are tightening up our security at this point. We have had numerous meetings with administrators, or right now, all of the schools are locked all day. The buzzer system that Don has purchased will be up and running in all the schools by next, by this Thursday or Friday, which means you'll have to be buzzed in to get into any building. There'll be a camera at the secretary's office. We have talked to all of the staff, tried to really get them on alert a little more without, you know, causing a lot of anxiety in our students, but really just to be more aware of what's going on. We are in the process, Don is of getting this school, I think all the schools turned over to key fobs, so all the doors will be locked. We are going to meet with the administrators tomorrow from here to really, really have to start to look at this building. It was locked all day today and it'll be locked all week, but it's not locked after the kids leave, which is problematic. But so much goes on here at night. If you locked it, how would people get in? We have an issue with the swimmers in the morning. They're here very early, they want the doors open, or at least that's what they've had in the past. So we really have a lot of issues that we have to deal with in this building and it's going to cause people to not be happy probably. But I think we have to err on the side of caution and I'm not saying that we have to be totally, you know, a sealed building, but I think we have to be more cautious and definitely more safety conscious because at this point, we really are not, we really are not, yes.
I had a call from a neighbor, Pat Cooper, who works in one of the buildings as a clerk, and she wanted me to tell the board that she and the other clerks are not happy about being sort of out in the front to be receptionists or whatever.
Right.
They're not happy about it at all. I don't know what we can do about it.
Well, right now, although she hasn't been at the front, as far as I know, there has been another, what we did is for this week until the buzzers are ready, we have to have people at the doors. I mean, you can't lock all the doors and not have some way for people to get in. So today at Burnham and Booth Free, we had power professionals who sat at the door inside and if somebody came, knocked, they let them in, they looked, took, looked at their ID and they signed them in and they were allowed to go wherever. At this building, we had two of the secretaries. Mrs. Gallo arranged it from the high school office of which that person you mentioned was not at the door. And again, they sat there and they signed people in. You know, it's, it's, you know, a job of a secretary, then it's not security, they're not, all they're doing is signing people in, opening doors and signing people in. So it's, I mean, someone at this point has to do this. You know, we, we can't lock the doors and not have somebody answer them when someone's there. So it will just be until the buzzers are in, which will be on Thursday or Friday, but the same issue is going to really be that these are the people who are going to see somebody on a camera and buzz people in. I mean, that's the way it works in other schools. So it's, we are starting a, a safety committee for the districts and, you know, invite any board members who want to be on it. I will send you an email. We met today, we're going to meet right after January and start to really look at different things and see how we want it to move and in what direction. But, you know, when you, the parents that emailed me this weekend, and there were many, many emails to me and all of the principals, their concern is safety and like every parent is very, very concerned about the safety of their child. And when you make places more safe, you kind of take away some freedoms and liberty a little bit, you know what I'm saying? People just can't come and go as they please and you have to put some rules and regulations in place. And so that's where we are right now. I don't believe anybody, you know, was in any danger here at any time at any of the schools. The staff has been wonderful, very, very supportive for the kids, but, you know, we have to do what we have to do to make everyone safe, so.
I would just say, I would, I haven't discussed this with anyone, but this issue with the safety committee and being meeting, and these are decisions, I assume that you will be bringing to the board.
Yes.
There's going to have to be some fundamental decisions as how we intend to operate as a region. Are we going to operate as a locked camp or, you know, obviously there's some things that have to be done and the board will have to decide, I'm sure with input from the public and the administration and the staff, but these are fundamental decisions that we're going to have to make as to how we intend to operate in the future.
I think it's difficult too, as the situation's fluid. I mean, we're not the only district that's also reevaluating what we do.
Right.
Imagine every district, even, even the ones that heretofore had previously thought of themselves as maybe ahead of the pack in terms of security.
Sure.
Are probably rethinking everything.
Sure.
I'm on, I can tell you, I'm on a board chair roundtable email through Kate and the emails are just flying. I mean, you know, every district, board chairs either asking Kate for suggestions or telling people this is what we're doing and, you know, it's, it was wild. I'm sure as many as you got for parents was twice as many as that from different board chairs, you know, considering this very serious issue. Greg.
I, I was going to say, you know, we have to be careful to do what's necessary, I think, but we also have to be careful not to, not to overreact to something that's a horrible, horrible tragedy, only because, you know, there are certain things that you, I, I don't know, I don't want to, I don't know what the facts are of the case down there, but it did appear that the school was well-secured.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And the difficulty becomes, there are certain things you can't protect against. I mean, you can, you can protect a school if you turn it into a prison and you put steel reinforced doors and, and all kinds of things in order to protect yourselves, you still can't protect against certain things. But, but I think the important thing is you have to do what's appropriate, you have to have extremely well-trained staff. Those are things that you can do because what the staff's reaction to a difficult situation can minimize damage and risk. I mean, I think that's our public rationale, that kind of thing was, was important there in the situation in Newtown. But I, I think that, that the other thing that has got to change with schools is probably the design of the facilities. And one of the biggest things we're working against, we had this discussion tonight, facilities committee, one of the biggest things we're working against is the fact that these schools were not designed with a controlled entry access point in mind, with, very limited in that, in that respect. I mean, you've got doors going off in different directions all around this building and, and the question is, do the doors need to be exits or do they need to be entrances or both? And the difficulty is, what do you do in the spring when, you know, students go outside and they leave the door wide open? I mean, you know, the, the idea is, this is one reason why our antiquated facilities and buildings need to be reexamined and rethought. But one of the reasons is because they are not designed with a modern security approach to a school in mind. And when, and when we talk about loving the old schools we've got, one of the things we have to think about is whether or not the time has come for them to be repurposed, rethought, redesigned. And it's not easy to do with antiquated buildings. And so that's another thing that needs to factor into the long-range planning process and the approach, is what have we got for buildings and what do we want to have going forward? What things need to be done in order to make them safer? Because you can't protect against everything, but you can take reasonable precautions to protect against a lot of things. And so that, that's at least my thinking on it, present topic. It's in flux because this has just been a hard decision.
I know that we're not going to decide anything tonight. I appreciate what you're saying with regard to the buzzer mechanism being installed, but I, I know that we look forward to hearing back from you and the safety committee. Kelly?
Sandy Hook did have some excellent physical barriers and procedures. What really seems to have helped them were those drills and preparation that the staff and students took part in, and I'd like to see us do as much as we can.
Well, we definitely do those drills. Principals know that you are to do at least two lockdowns a year and at least one fire drill a month. I'll be honest with you, with everything that's going on, I have not checked that they're doing that, but I will make sure that we are doing that. And the other thing that I've done in my past positions is I have done drills with staff members and with administrators on just scenarios that happen. Okay, this horrible thing happens, what do we do? Step one, step two, step three, you know what I'm saying? So I think we have to do more of that and so we definitely will do that. It's definitely a priority, definitely a priority.
Brian?
Question that's come up with, we worry about inside the building, what happens inside the building and security and locking down and doing. When we have the children that are outside the building, on the track field, on the playground, not in the confinement, I, I know my children have never done drills like that, the opposite, they're outside, they're more exposed. I mean, I'd like to see something with that because that was one of the questions that my children gave me and I did not have the answer. You know, what happens then?
Right, absolutely.
Mike?
Just a suggestion, Pat, something to look at would be a, a school resource officer. I'm not suggesting that we, we don't have the financial wherewithal, I think, to have one in each of our schools because our schools are so small. But I think it might make sense to have a, a school resource officer liaison for all of our schools. I think there's a, there's a number of advantages they could be working with your administrators on any kind of lockdown that you do. They should be working hand-in-hand because you need that level of coordination in a real scenario. And I also think it would benefit the students to have that, that presence there. You know, in the younger grades, it's officer-friendly, you know, where they get to know that, you know, police, who police are, what their purpose is. And then in the older grades, it's just another person who can hear what's going on, walk the halls occasionally, check in with kids, one more set of adult ears there.
I can tell you, it's a historical perspective that this region, I don't know what the state's position anymore, if they're still offering school resource officers around the state to kind of afford them, but several years ago, I don't know how many years ago, maybe 10 years ago, this school was offered as a resource officer, a state policeman, and the board turned it down. So that was the board's position at that time. Michelle?
I just had a question. I know that for my student, for my kids, that they've done the lockdown drills, but I was wondering, do all of our classroom doors lock from the inside?
No, we are, Don is working on that, he's doing assessment of all, all the buildings. He's, no, we're working on it.
Okay, is that what you meant by the key fob?
Key fobs are going to be for the external doors.
For the external.
External doors.
But the internal.
The internal doors, most of the classrooms doors, doors lock. But we have some rooms that were never really classrooms, that now we use as classrooms that don't have locks and, and we have to, I mean, we really have to start from ground zero and do a real assessment and, and, and make sure that, you know, we really go to, put a good plan in place.
The key fob, if I'm correct, not only can be, if you lose your key fob as a teacher, it can be deactivated immediately.
Mm-hmm.
And also, if you go in, wherever you go with your key fob, the computer tracks you.
Right.
So it's not only like the hotel thing where you just put your key and it's open, it can be programmed to deny it in certain areas too, or it can, where you've been.
Where you've been.
And it can tell you can't go anywhere.
And Don and I have had conversations, if he wants to add to it, we really don't want to give out many key fobs. We want to give them to people who need key fobs. You know, if you're a teacher in the building and you come in this building, for example, at seven o'clock and you leave at four, you know, the building is open, you know what I'm saying? You'll be able to buzz in and go and it'll be open at a certain time in the morning. So, you know, that's not the piece that's going to be difficult. The piece that's going to be difficult is more in the schools where communities have all of these keys, community members, and they think they can just come and go as they please. And that's something that really has to stop. I mean, if we're going to be a, a safe and secure school system, not that we can ever be 100%, we have to make sure that, you know, not every Tom, Dick and Harry has a key out there, which right now is exactly the way it is.
Greg?
I was just going to point out that the, that the electronic or that the improved security access to the buildings was not something that's reactive to this event.
No, thank you.
That was a process that had been ongoing for some time and a lot of these improvements, these security improvements were things that were in the pipeline. They have a new urgency now, but they were ongoing. We've been talking about this for a while and we have to vote some time in the facilities committee through security-related issues, and so that's something that we've been, it's been an ongoing process for us.
That's true. Next. Okay, going through my, I just wanted to mention that in policy, we have started to discuss the process of moving our credits for graduation from 28 to 25. I did hand in the, the, the package you got this week, we have a letter from Sharon Brennan who did some research for us about the schools in Connecticut that send 90% of their students to college and what their credits are. All of them were 25 and less. What we're trying to do is we're trying to be proactive, we're trying to follow the new Connecticut state redesign, which is 25 credits. We're trying to make sure that we are more in tune with the core curriculum requirements for all students. We've increased the amount of credits in math, we have lowered the electives. So that's where the change is. And although we are recommending that in three years, it's not going to be till the class of 2016, that we go to 25 credits, it really is an option for students to still take as many electives as they'd like to, so they can still take 28 credits on a full course and then if they wanted to take some virtual high school courses, they could go over the 28 credits. But we are trying to be proactive and we're trying to provide opportunities for our kids, helping them to increase the achievement at high levels and to really focus on the quality of instruction and the rigor. And so that's just, I just wanted to give that, you that heads up. We're not going to be discussing it tonight, but it is in your packet and it's going to be coming up soon. And I am going to start to get it out there to parents in my newsletter and have a meeting so we can talk about it, so that people know where we're coming from and that it's really a positive move, so.
Pat, could you just, could you just, just a little bit of review for me because I'm having trouble remembering exactly, what's the chief advantage you're moving to 25 and 28?
Well, at this point, we are trying very hard to follow the Connecticut high school redesign plan, which right now the state is at 22 credits. They're moving by the year 2010 to 25 credits for all.
2010.
2010.
No, 2010.
2020, I'm sorry. 2020 to 25 credits. We currently have kids who are not taking four years of math, which now we're gonna require. We have students who do not have as much seat time as they need as far in math and in science that we're seeing without the continuous courses. We want to make sure that we follow the standards set by not only the state, but we've also looked at the National Association of College admissions, which I'm gonna send you that information. And so, there's really a lot of reasons to get us on the 25, knowing that it's a minimum. It's a minimum.
I know, but it seems counterintuitive and I guess this is the, I'm trying to sort of follow up on some points that were made in, in the forum we had. It seems counterintuitive that if you're requiring fewer credits, you're actually increasing rigor and giving students more opportunities than actually giving students, I mean, if students are, if students are not getting the math classes in with 28, how is going to the 25 gonna help them do that?
Well, if you just think about math, we currently teach geometry in, in, in one semester. Okay? We're going to be teaching geometry in a full year. I don't have the numbers right in front of me because, but it's, does anybody remember? I wanna say it's like 40 or 60 more hours of math in a whole year than in that semester.
So, so what you're saying is you're really rejiggering the number of credits per course within the framework as well?
Yes, absolutely.
So, credit, a credit means more seat time?
Right, in the 25.
So, if there's more time represented by that one?
So, actually, what you're doing is you're improving the quality of the credits.
Yes.
That we have, so, so it's like, you know, it's like saying 25 could really equal 30 of the kind of credits we're offering now in terms of seat time if we're really doing it right.
That's correct.
So, okay, so that, I think, was the big misunderstanding.
Yes.
Of the whole process. And that's gonna be the hardest thing you have to explain to people.
Right.
Is why more credits do not equal better, more rigorous education.
Right.
It's the quality of the credits that counts.
Exactly. And when you read the, the standards from, what is it, the Council's, National Association of?
College Admissions Council.
Thank you. You're going to see that they don't, they have a list of almost 15 things and the amount of credit you have isn't on there. It's the rigor, it's the classes, it's your SATs, it's your ACTs, it's your scores on APs, it's your letters of recommendation, it's all of that kind of stuff. So, you're gonna get all that information, I'm gonna share it, but I am gonna have, you know, I really am planning, just so you know, with the parents to start, right when we get back, a vision and mission to really look at with our principals, with parents, where we're going in the next couple of years, what the plan is, input from parents and really starting to think about, you know, our educational program pre-K to 12. Okay? So, that's that piece. The next piece I want to bring up to you is the issue that I brought up once before and it came up from some parents, and it's also one of the options in the long-range planning. And that is the possibility of reconfiguring Booth and Burnham and making Booth Free a K-2 school and making Burnham a 3, 4, 5 school. It will, the reason I bring it to your attention is for a couple of reasons. Number one, it will help with the socialization piece of students where, just for example, now, I believe in one of the schools, we have eight kindergarten students and one of the schools, we have 10 or 11, okay? And it would be nice to mix those students up and have a class of 18 students. So, I think that would be a, a positive. I think it would be a good start of having parents see that it's okay if my child goes to school in another town. I think it shows goodwill, that we are listening to our constituents when, you know, they, they make some of these suggestions. It may save a little bit of, of money financially, you know, from my very quick numbers this year, I think it might save two classroom teachers, but it may cost more for busing. To be honest with you, I haven't done a full-scale evaluation. I just wanted to bring it to your attention at this point to discuss, I did speak to our attorney today and it would require a referendum. So, that, I was not happy to hear that because I think that's never easy.
Hold on, but you did say that this is something that was, that was suggested by parents?
Yes.
In the meetings that we've had and this was one of the items that was, was brought up by parents.
And it was honestly, if I recall, in the second meeting, I believe it was the number one, it was the number one vote getter in, in our options.
Right.
It was. And so, it's just something to consider, I think, if we're gonna, I was really sad to hear that you needed a referendum, I'll be honest with you, 'cause I, I don't know.
But just, just to reassure you and to echo what you're saying, I think there is a measure of support for this, both in Roxbury and Bridgewater. The reason being is that this is not a, a new idea. This has actually been happening on a small extent for, for years and years where, for whatever reason, parents have, have requested that their child go from one school to the other. And, and usually the district has granted that. So, now we would just be formalizing that.
I didn't know that.
Greg.
It seems to me that we had a, another proposal put forward to us a while back that would have accomplished the same socialization result, but without the need for a referendum, and that was multi-age classrooms. Yeah, it ran into a firestorm because some people were too pig-headed to look at it and understand it, because you've got kids now in multi-age classrooms. We had that discussion. Right now, every classroom in the system is multi-age. There isn't one grade at Booth, Burnham or Washington Primary School that doesn't have kids of multiple ages. So, the issue really became, are we so high-bound to the concept of first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, et cetera, that we can't see what the handwriting on the wall is, which is the kids are already multi-age and we artificially, based on your birthday, put you in one grade or another? And that, you know, with a system like that, you could avoid the craziness of a referendum and that whole process and instead accomplish the result of putting, of putting more kids in fewer classrooms by doing that. It's just something that got, it, it's something that got a bad, I think, created some bad thoughts because people just really didn't look at it carefully enough. And they, and they didn't, and I think when, when people, for example, at Roxbury, looked at it, you know, at the PTO level and looked at it, thought about it carefully, and Emily, you tell me, if I'm right on that, I think that, that views modified and changed when they saw what it really was. And, and look, if the most important thing to you is whether your kid gets the aloha day in the fifth grade, then I think you really need to, to, to give some serious thought to what in God's name are you talking about when it comes to your kids? And why is that the decision that governs instead of what's best for the kids to determine about it professionally in the system? But that was the thing that I heard from more people as the reason why they didn't want their kids put in the classroom. Now, there were some people that were concerned initially that their fifth-grade kids would get held back by being in a class with fourth graders, when in fact, when they actually looked at the way it was gonna be taught, they actually realized that their fifth-grade kids would have the ability under that system to be doing sixth-grade work, rather than being held back, they would be, have the ability to be advanced. And I think that that really didn't get enough consideration. I think before we head down the road to creating a referendum in the midst of a, a, a long-range planning process that is not without controversy, we may want to rethink about that program because that doesn't need a referendum. That could be done in the existing system by the vote of this board or by the superintendent doing it.
Michelle?
I think it's, it seems sort of ironic, but I think educationally, it's actually easier probably to have one school as a K-2 and the other as a 3, 5, because you're not adapting curriculum and retraining all your teachers, you're just bussing some students from one building to another. So, logistically, once you figure out how, that's the hard part, and then once that's set, everybody continues teaching the curriculum the way they have been. And there are a lot of benefits I can see where we have imbalance, where we have a fourth grade in one building of 20 and a fourth grade in another of 10, where we could have two even classes of 15. So, we're, we're addressing equity. I think the professionally, every grade where you have two teachers, now they get to collaborate, which is really a great thing professionally, to be able to work with somebody who's teaching the same thing that you are. So, I think there are a lot of good reasons to look at it. I think if, the, the thing that we need to think about is if this is a potential solution for next year, education and the whole referendum process takes a while, so things would have to move quickly and parents would want to probably know soon where their, where their students would be going to school, you know, at least by the summer. We don't want to be waiting till the last second to figure this out. So, I think the referendum, just the posting, just the putting together the question and the posting and everything is a two to three-month process. So, so anyway, if, if this is something we're thinking about, we'll probably need to get ahead of this on a PR part very soon.
Kelly?
Just in case anybody's wondering why this requires a referendum, even though I'm doing this purely from ancient memory of years ago and even though you have pressure stuff. The reason is, is the regional plan states that there will be K-5 elementary schools in each town. It doesn't just say elementary schools. So, in order to change the regional plan after what we went through several years ago with the 1047(c) lawsuits, that language would have to be changed to a K-2 in one school, in one town, and a 3, 5 in another town, which is pretty much why it has to go referendum. There's, there's nothing less or more complicated than that.
Let me ask this question, if I might, just to follow up on that. What, what's going on, I mean, how many classes, grades of each, classes of each grade do you have at Washington Primary right now?
We have one of each grade and two fours and two fives. And next year, we'll have one four. So, we'll only have two grades of fives, that's it.
So, we're not really considering that maybe Washington has issues that could be better dealt with without having to, I mean, I'm just, what I'm supposed to?
Well, we have, we, there's a, there's a, you know, we have a whole long-range plan committee that's been meeting, that we're meeting again, and we're moving. I'm just, I, you know, I said that I would bring this up and that's what I'm doing and, you know.
Michelle?
One last quick thing. I, I also, I wouldn't be that afraid of a referendum. I know it's a sort of a pain, it's a lot of language and hoops to jump through, but I just, you know, do the best you can to educate the benefits, put it out there and they'll either vote yes or no and then we move forward. I don't, I don't, I, I know there's a lot of support actually from the parents and I don't, and if it's going to save money, even if it's a little bit or if it's a neutral and the parents support it, I, I don't see it becoming a large, I don't see it detracting from the long-range plan. I think everybody who voted for it realized it was sort of a short-term solution to address some immediate needs of some low kindergarten classes, but that it was not a long-term solution for anything. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't shy away from it just because it requires a referendum.
Ellen, something else I just realized. You know, comparing the different aspects of either multi-age classrooms in both schools or splitting the schools as you just mentioned, even though there are more complicated professional learning and, and organizational difficulties with multi-age, that also has in its favor not having another transition. Now, I'm trying to think of how the transitions go and I'm not an expert, obviously, there are, you know, professionals here who know more about that, but I've always heard that, you know, transitions are, are difficult in, in children's education and that would be adding another transition, although technically it's just a transition from building to building because it would be the same classes, they're just meeting in a different building after second grade. But just to keep that in mind, you know, have everyone keep that in mind as we go forward, weighing these two.
Greg.
Well, yeah, I think, Ellen, you may be on to something, which is that how many transitions do we want to have in the system? And do we really want to be taking half measures? I don't know, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just saying that I have my doubts as to, as to, and I don't quite understand it yet, so.
Well, middle schools have always been the focus of painful transition and it seems like we're, we're working towards removing one of those as we kind of integrate middle school and high school, so maybe that's the opposite.
Well, I don't, do we want to add another one?
Just, just to point out that that, adding that transition is not unusual. There are many districts, Wilton, Brookfield, that I know of that, that do already split up the elementary experience.
Well, and Melford has an intermediate, intermediate, it's a 4, 5, a K-3, 4, 5, a 6, 7, 8.
Right. And I'm not minimizing what you're saying, in fact, I, I agree that that.
But you're right.
Any change has pros and cons and I agree that that is one of the cons.
Just to keep in mind.
That we have to consider.
Emily?
I don't dislike the idea, but I struggle with, with the long-range plan of us doing a stopgap that is not thinking regionally. It's only considering two towns. I, I really struggle with that. If we're gonna start being a region, which is the whole goal of the long-range plan, for everyone to get on the same page, our interim measure is not starting to think regionally. That is just one aspect that I personally struggle with. We're involving two schools and not three, and that just seems, I don't know, I'm having a hard time with that. I realize that the stopgap, I'm not 100% sure it's gonna solve very many problems. I realize it has a lot of support because it doesn't really solve anything, but.
We did, we changed.
I don't know, I, I struggle with, if we're gonna start thinking regionally, which is truly what we have to do if we ever want to get anywhere, the stopgap maybe should think regionally. I mean, I think we have to start somewhere. I don't know, I struggle with it only involving two towns and the smaller two towns when we really are three towns, as the word in the, why we need a referendum.
All right, thank you.
I struggle with that.
All right, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. I said to plan the board retreat except I forgot my calendar, so we'll have to do that at the next meeting. You'll all just have to wait.
I know.
So, this is our last scheduled meeting for the year, is that right? Our next year?
I believe so, yes.
This is it, baby. January 7th is our next board of business meeting. All right, is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
May I, may I, Dr. for the President, the jury.
Oh, my pleasure.
Second up, I'm sorry, item seven, opportunity for the public to comment on it. No, all right? We're adjourned, thank you.